We already lost Jerry.
This meeting is being recorded.
You are ready to go, Brian, whenever you want.
Okay. Hello, everybody. This is the Bridgewater zoning Board of Appeals meeting. The meeting at the Bridgewater zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There's no in-person attendance at the of the members or the public will be permitted. But every efforts will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within 48 hours it will be posted on a town link website. And the social media page with us tonight, myself, Brian Heath, Chairman, Jerry Chipman, and Anna Klimas. During the meeting, all votes of the board will be taken as a roll call vote. Following Bridgewater Town staff members or attendants to Jennifer Burke, Community and Economic Development Director, Steve Solari Building Commissioner, Nicole Salvo, Executive Assistant. And at this time, all mics are muted. The board's mics will be unmuted throughout the whole meeting. And as it appears, as items appear on the agenda, the project representatives mics will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and allows for public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your questions by listening to your name and address and your question. The chair will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. And you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking your question. If you're on a phone, you can use dial star nine to use the raise your hand. So right now we'll get going. Before us, we have two requests before the board tonight. We're going to take them in order here. First request is from Pratt Town, which is, well, it's where are we here? CCMPZ Main Street LLC.
No, that's, Brian, that's not me. That one's from McCollum.
That, oh, McCollum. Okay, this is the Better Homes LLC. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Better Homes LLC. We'll get that straight. Come on, we're a little rusty here tonight. This is a 43 development and there's some requests for some changes deemed. The board will be determining whether they are substantial or insubstantial. Who's here tonight representing Bridgewater Homes LLC?
I believe Jeff Cutter is Jeff. You have to unmute yourself. Nope, you're still muted, Jeff. Go ahead.
How about now?
Now you're perfect.
Got you now.
Myself, Jeffrey Cutter and Lisa Hamilton may be out there somewhere. She works with us. She'll be observing, but keeping me silent. So would you like me to begin? Do you have, would you like to lead with questions? How would you like to do this?
Well, if you, Jeff, if you could just explain what it is you're requesting and then
Sure.
and why, and we can, we can go eat one by one or, you know, you can put them both out there.
Okay. Does the board, and thank you for hearing this tonight. Does the board happen to have the original planting plan? That would have been recorded, but I also did email in.
Is that the one that Nicole that you sent out this afternoon, I believe?
Yes.
Okay.
Nicole can put it on the screen if you need it.
I thought it'd be easiest. I put some yellow highlight there so that we could address the two areas. You could visually see the areas I'm speaking of. Sorry. Thank you. As I look at this and I look at Brett Way, the main road. If I address the area on the left, the lengthier area highlighted. According to this plan, now the first floor in this development is that it's been so long in progress. This planting plan was done in 2005. So keeping that in mind, the growth of the natural trees, et cetera, has been quite dramatic since this was originally proposed. But again, to this area where the longer area is, you'll see that there are three more substantial trees in that picture. I believe they're Elms and then the rest are a form of arbivideae. Those we are able and were able, they've been installed. What I'm asking the board for is because the main gas line for all the homes on Brett Way runs right under those trees. And that's the gas main. This plan also calls for a fence. And because of the depth of the fence posts, I don't think it's wise and I don't think it's necessary to put the fence there. The arbivideae should be growing to approximately 30 feet high eventually. And I can't tell you exactly how many were planted. I don't know if I have a photo of the arbivideae for you. This is the second area. All right, that that one that you have up is the other area if you want to go to that. Yes, that one there, that would be the second area. And my point there is similar but different to the other one. There's no gas line running there. But again, the initial plan calls for us to, where that fence is that you see right now. The plan shows us to run plantings as well as a fence all the way across that area, which is considered wetlands. For a number of reasons, I don't think it makes sense. First and foremost is it is pretty spongy there. And to put a fence in there and put posts in there, whatever is moving under there is going to be blocked. The material is, as I said, spongy when it rains very hard, the water moves, the material moves. You're going to end up with a fence and just, for lack of a better term, clay and other such matter soil. Gets fenced and nothing's going to be able to pass through there. Beyond that, it's actually quite pretty. And I really just don't think it makes sense. There are some other photos that would capture it as well, I believe, but I think this one at least gives you some idea. And again, that is deemed wetlands in this project. That's another photo of it. The telephone poles that you see, those are along Plymouth Street. Just to give you some perspective, it's pretty full grown. So those are the, those are the only two places I'm asking for to just not put, to not put the fence. And over also not put plantings in the wetlands either, because I think there's a substantial amount of plantings there. I don't see why it requires it, but so it's just the fence, really. That's, that's the problem.
I guess, Jeff, my first question would be is, have you had any conversations with the abutters? Especially the people that have the fence there on, what is it, Brett Way? It's their backyards.
Yes. So is, one of the homes just turned over within the last six months. It was purchased, I believe, by an investor who was renting the house to a bunch of college kids. There seemed to be five or six cars there. There's no judgment there. I'm just making the point that that I have not had any discussion with that. The other one, the other woman who's, we have had discussions with because she actually, for a little while, she had her white fence was actually protruding onto the Bridgewater Homes property behind some of the houses. So we talked to her when I was out there digging the trees and we're, and seeding the the slope where the trees are on the side of the road there. My discussion was hers that we were planting these trees. And we're going to create a buffer and it's going to look beautiful. That's, that's honestly the only discussion we've had. The other problem, just again, getting back to that one where the gas line is in the fence, is if it's not put immediately on the side of that road, which is where the trees are as well, would have to be at the bottom of the slope. What you can't see on this plan is that, that's a, that's a fair amount. I'd say a 30 degree slope down to the grade of the abutters properties. It would require, I would estimate 10-foot fence down at the bottom of the slope abutting their property. If any fence were to be installed. And I'm not sure about that height. I'm guessing on the 10 feet, but it is quite a slope. So between the gas line being right under there. What I'm not bringing up, because I don't think it's part of this discussion, but it has been brought up by some of the owners of Pratt Town is the plow, the pile that will plow up and down there, whomever is hired to do the plowing on any given year. That fence is not likely to survive if we have heavy snow in clearing that road. That's something that the owners of the development have commented on with all of the fences. But just giving you what I hear. That's, so there are, there is more than one reason, but I'm not sure that one's justified.
Jeff, are there any sidewalks on that side of the road there?
So on this plan, at this moment, there is zero sidewalks in the whole development. But clearly there will be. And so the board knows the sidewalk is going on the opposite side of the road. I believe those are labeled lots 18 through 23. It wraps all the way up to lot 27. So yes, there will be a sidewalk there. It then extends to the other side of Pratt Town Lane. From there, there are, there will be sidewalks in the entire development. They've been approved for the work to be done, whether or not that can be done this fall, I'm not sure, or in the spring. But they will be done.
So Chairman, I'm looking at the longer one, the two lots. Are those lots part of your subdivision or are those addresses on Plymouth Street?
Those are dresses on Plymouth Street. So I referred to, I believe it's 688 is the one that was just purchased by an investor and is now rented. That one there, yes. As, as an aside, that mailbox is actually, was actually placed on Pratt Town Lane. For some reason, I think the post office asked them to do that, but I'm not sure. The other one is Mrs. McCourt, very nice older lady. We have fencing, which you may or may not be able to see between her property, actually she has fencing. We're also installing fencing between her property and lots 26, 25, and 24. There are also trees there. There's fencing and trees. Same trees, same, actually arbivides and elms, et cetera, that stretch from lot 26, which is Plymouth Street, down to lot 24 Brett Way and all the way down Brett Way. So that's all been accomplished.
Is that the fence that you showed in another photo? The new stockade fence?
No.
Would you say that's hers?
No. So two things are happening there. She has white fencing that existed. In fact, I think I alluded to, we had to ask her to move it over to her side of the property. It was approaching on the lots 26 and 25. So those homeowners, when they came in, they, they obviously couldn't close on the houses with that approach. So she moved her fence back and we are, because it was a white fence where the owners of 24 and 25 have elected to have a white fence extend from hers so that it's one white fence all the way down. The rest of the fence that we showed is the six-foot stockade fence. And as well, what you don't see on this photo, because it wasn't, it's on the plan and I didn't think it was necessary. There is a stockade fence that goes on the other side of Brett Way as well. But again, this, this, that's, that's over by in between the lot and the, call them wetland areas there, drainage, big drainage areas.
So I guess my only question was, it would be is, if you've spoken to the abutters, the Plymouth Street abutters who are part of your project, is there a satisfaction level with them that it's, you're looking for a change?
I'm happy to do that. I did not, as I mentioned, because of the situation on the left house, it was just turned over. They were working on it. I would have to look up who the owner is because I've not seen the owner. I can, we have a good relationship with Mrs. McCourt. I do speak with her. As I said, she came out when we were planting the trees. I can ask her if she's okay with the modification. I, either way, there would, from a safety and in my mind, there would need to be some kind of modification because this plan does call for the fence to be right on top of that gas main. And that just can't happen. So it, if for some reason we have to do a fence because she would like one or the board would like, you know, it's just on one, it would have to be something that would be much taller than a six foot. And I suppose we'd have to come in front of the building department and get a permit for it since it's taller than six foot. And it would have to move, I'd have to just figure out how far our property goes over versus where theirs is and see what kind of room we have compared to the slope.
Why would it have to be taller?
Because of the substantial slope. So what is on, what else is on the plan there, which you don't see on this plan? Because this is the planting plan only. On the infrastructure plan, at the bottom of that slope, there is a drainage swale with black pipe that is just underground stone and black pipe. And that drainage goes all the way, that takes the water from, well, up along Brett Way, all the way down Brett Way and then across Pratt Town Lane and into, it goes further down there. So that's on the infrastructure plan. So there, there are a couple of things that are very challenging about getting a fence in there. If, if the board would like an opportunity to see it anytime in between now, we can always get a continuance. I mean, I can, I can't do it when the ground freezes, but I can certainly do it in the spring. So we did get all the trees in and that was my priority due to weather so that they survived the winter and came up nicely in the spring.
So I have a question for you in regards to the Pratt Town houses. Are those occupied? The ones directly across from the two abutters? And I'm over 40, so I can't read the numbers without.
So if it starts from the left.
18 to 23.
Yes. So for those ones, are those occupied?
23 and 22 are occupied. 20 and 19, 21, 20, and 19 are under construction. But 20, 21, 22, no, 22 and 23 are occupied.
And so then my next question would be, is 22 and 23, are they aware of this change and what is their position? Because my, because again, this would be, I know it's some setback from Route 104, but it's still a main street.
I did not ask lot 22 about the fence. It did not cross my mind. I apologize. I'm happy to.
Yeah. I think, I think Jeff, listening to both Jerry and Anna, and in my mind, they're not unreasonable requests. However, there are people and we are them that are being, could be in position by this. So the two abutters, you know, you know, the, to your point, the arbivides, they're going to grow and they'll be fine, I think. But the plans that were approved and people, you know, came to the hearings on this Pratt Town. You know, they were told they were going to have a fence.
Yep.
If they, if they're okay with that, you know, that, that makes a big difference. And then second, on the other portion where you had the picture and you'd submitted it with the yellow line. Is that, is that fence coming between, is that the one that's shown on the thing between unit 29 and 30?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that land that is in the, so the horseshoe, who actually owns that?
Are you talking about where I drew that yellow line?
Yeah.
That's, so the entire property is 21 acres. And that's owned by, well, I guess, technically at this moment, it's owned by me. And when the last house is sold, it's owned by the.
So it's part of Pratt Town. And to your point, it's wetlands. It's part of Pratt Town. You can't build on it.
That's correct.
So again, I think, I think the only, you know, I, I can't see where the, the people up there on 70, 750 and 752 plus Plymouth Street really aren't getting very impacted by that.
No, because the stocking fence wouldn't actually go quite that far. The.
Right. And it's not going to go to their land, I understand. And, and, and you know, it's like, to your point, it's going to be lower anyways. So the grass is going to grow up above it. So I see the, the incline going down from where it is now. Again, it's, and I'll let Anna and Jerry speak for themselves, but just if, again, and, and listening to everybody, my opinion on this, not a big deal, as long as you get the, the abutters to agree to it.
That's, that, that makes 100% sense. So my, my apologies for not reaching out to them.
That's fine. That's what we have these meetings for.
So I'm happy to reach out to those two, 688, 694, lot 22, 23. Is there anyone else that you would want to hear from?
Jerry, Anna. Jerry, are you, are you guys okay with that position?
So, I mean, I don't know that I am as strong as you are, Brian, in regard, or Mr. Chairman, in regards to, you know, I want to, I do want to hear from them and their position. I don't know if it'll sway me either way, but I would like them to have the opportunity to be heard. So you said the other, the 19 and 20 or, and 21 are under construction. Have they been sold?
Yes, they are. Well, no, 21 isn't affordable. So that's not, not, so. 19 and 20 are market rates. 18 is also unaffordable. And again, 19, 20, and 21 are all under construction.
So the 19 and 20, is there an owner?
Yes, there are owners. I'm sorry.
So that's, so that's, I guess that's my question. I would like to have all of the identified owners at least get notice. And, and we can go from there. That's my, that would be my position.
Is the fence going to be behind the, like, are the, ever, looking at the picture, it seems like the arbivides are up by the roadside and the, and the fence would be behind them?
Yes. That's the way I read the plan. Wait, let me just see. Let me see that again. Yes, that's the way I read it as well.
Yeah. Knowing arbivides, they're going to grow up over the six-foot front fence real quick.
Yes. And you know what I'm going to do, because we have to obviously continue this and, and I have to speak to all these abutters. I will also send the board some perspective on the slope that's there as well as show the board the infrastructure plan where the drainage runs. And that may give you some better perspective on the challenges of the fence and thus potentially how tall a fence might have to be, if, if you could even put a fence in there. I'm not sure if you can, but, but, but anyway, let me speak to the abutters. Get you the infrastructure plan that shows the drainage and the slope. And of course, if any of you were in the area, you can always drive by.
So Chairman, I guess I would just say that I, I just really can't. I'm trying to imagine something that I really need a rendering that the engineer puts together and shows us what you're talking about. Because, I mean, we can go back to the old, the original plan and color it up, but it doesn't show me what I need to see. And I, I, I really, I mean, you're on, on its face, it looks like very insubstantial. But the fact that you didn't speak with anyone and, you know, you went out of your way to speak with the woman at 694 when her fence was on someone on your property, basically. But you didn't come back to her to say, hey, listen, what you saw in the public hearings aren't going to happen. And the same on the other side. I mean, to come in and not having spoken with them, you're, you're sort of on, on, I think, the precipice of, if you're flunked, you go into substantial improvement just because of the fact that these, if these people were part of the, the development, I'd say, I, I get it, you know, that stuff happens. But these are abutters. I don't know if they were happy with it or not happy, but the fact that you didn't speak with them is disconcerting to me. So I'm happy to continue. But I want to see renderings and do you have another spot in the development that has a similar slope? With a fence or do you have anything like that? Because the photos are, the photos confused me, quite frankly, until we came back to this. And I, I had to figure out for myself that the, the side, that piece of stockade I was seeing was behind, I think, if I'm correct, 24, 25, and 26. And so.
No, that was, I think Jerry was under 30.
That's between 29 and 30.
Okay. All right.
It says stockade fence, six-foot stockade.
It was just an example then. But I guess I. But I guess I just, you got to do a better job, Jeff.
All right, not a problem. I'm not sure what you want renderings of, sir.
Well, let me ask you this. I wasn't involved in this. When you went through the process, but did you have a landscape plan that you presented that showed the fencing and. The Abervites and other plantings that were going to be done? I'm assuming you had. A landscape plan.
This is it. This is, this is the landscape plan done by Meridian Associates Incorporated. Keep in mind, I came into the project in two thousand and fifteen. This plan was done. Years before I came into the project. I did reach out to them. Because. I mean, clearly, some of the things they had. Originally. Talked about. Are, you can imagine in seventeen years, these trees that were maybe ten feet tall are now thirty feet tall. And that's a little bit of the problem. It's very dated.
Like, I guess, I mean. The landscape folks should be the ones to do a rendering, but I guess what I'm looking to see is, if I'm. If I have my back to six ninety-four's house, I'd like to be able to see what I'd be looking at. What it, what it originally called for and then what you're presenting. For the change you're requesting. And I guess the same thing that Anna said, if I have my back to nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, I'd like to see. What was originally approved and what you're presenting. Because I'm not, I'm just not grasping the deep slope and, and I mean, if it's a. Deep slope, should there be a fence? So I, I mean. Thirty thousand feet up, looking at it doesn't help me. I need to see it at ground level, I guess. And I will take a ride by it.
Yes, and just to be clear, the only thing I'm requesting is no fence. Everything else is staying the same, but I will. Make sure that I, I've heard your comments and I will make sure that. I get you what you need. If I have to get a color rendering, I can do that. But the only thing that's changing is, and I'm requesting is no fence. And mainly, that's because of the gas line. I only pointed out the slope because one might say, well, just move it back five feet. Well, you can't actually do that.
If you look at it from our perspective. These Butters have, should have the opportunity to be heard. The development. So I'm saying if you can speak with them and do that, that way we're not flipping this into a substantial change. We want to keep it insubstantial.
I completely agree with you, sir. My mistake. And and I will take care of that.
I mean, I know it's not, it's not a hundred percent, but I mean, I'm just on Google Maps right now on the street, actually looking. Into the backs of those two homes and. I'm not understanding, is that where you say the slope is, where you planted the Abervites already?
The Abervites are at the very top of, are along the road.
Right.
The slope is, probably begins no more than. Twelve to eighteen inches. Further from the Abervites.
Because I have to drive by, I, you know, from, from. Again, looking at this, looking at Google Maps and. I don't see it, but I don't see where it's huge.
It's, when I say it's sloped and it's thirty degrees, it's, it's not, I wouldn't call it a huge slope, but what I am saying is that. In order to put a fence up there, if it's. Tall, I, I don't want to guess anymore. If it's a four-foot drop, you're going to need a ten-foot fence. As I said, there is infrastructure down at the bottom of that slope. That you can't puncture, otherwise the drainage system would be jeopardized. So I think it's, you know, the board is completely. You know, fair and accurate and correct in saying you need more information. And I will get you that. I will get, I will speak to all the Butters. And. Try to get you some better photos.
That, that'd be helpful, I think.
Okay.
So can we, a motion to continue?
The motion, Mr. Chairman, when, which meeting do you want to, do you want to go to the next one? I just don't know what's on the future agendas.
Jen. You're on mute, Jen.
I know, sorry, sorry. I don't know that we have anything specific at the moment on the agendas. I would just note that. For items for the next agenda, we would need things by next Wednesday at noon. So. If that's something Mr. Cutter feels that he can do, then that's fine. If not, I would suggest that the board push it out.
November ninth.
Um, like, well.
Well, Jeff, I would defer to you. I mean, do, I think. How long do you think it'll take you to get this information?
Would be no problem for us.
Unfortunately, Jen, I, I'm out of, out of state traveling for business on the night.
Okay, so. We don't, we only have one meeting in November scheduled because of the Thanksgiving holiday, so. The board could do a special meeting in November, or you could schedule it for the twenty-sixth and see what happens. But if you can't do it on the twenty-sixth, your next option is December fourteenth.
When is Thanksgiving?
I think it's the twenty-four, I just close my calendar.
Is that what the concern is?
So the Thanksgiving is the twenty-fourth. We typically don't meet the Wednesday night before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Which wouldn't be a regularly scheduled meeting on the twenty-third.
So then you'd be looking at jumping to, if you went to the following week, well, that'd be tripling up in December, so.
Well, what if, what if we did it the week, is there, if it's going to be a.
We could do the second or the sixteenth of November, if that works for anybody.
Second, yeah, those, I don't believe there's any issues. It's just not, like I said, I'm out of town on the night.
I, any, any, pretty much any date that you choose, I can make work in November. I'm not out of town, so.
So do you want to just change November ninth to the sixteenth? Is that?
As long as I can get the three of you guys there, that's fine.
I can be there.
I can be there.
And I don't have a, let me see, problem on the sixteen. Nope, I'm around.
That's fine. If you want to, somebody want to make that motion to change the regularly scheduled meeting from November ninth to November sixteenth? And then we'll continue this till November sixteenth.
So moved.
Wait, you got to make the motion.
Oh, I, I'd like to make a motion then that we cancel the November ninth meeting and change it to November sixteenth at seven P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and make a motion to continue this current.
Make a motion to continue this hearing to November sixteenth at seven P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, good time, board. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Okay, the next. Item on the agenda is a notice of insubstantial change. Presented by C C M P Z Main Street LLC, the McElwain School Apartments. And who do we have for that?
Hi, Mr. Chair. My name is Carla Chappie. I'm an attorney at Nixon P V D. Can you all hear us okay?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, great. And with me, I have Jason Corr. And Matt Zoller, who are the principals of the developer, as you said, McElwain School. Which is a redevelopment of, to create fifty-seven rental apartment units. A comprehensive permit was issued by your board in May of twenty nineteen. And now we are following up and notifying you, the board, that there are some insubstantial changes. Occurring at the property, really as a result of the need for field changes. Based on some of the conditions at the site. But Matt will walk you through each of those and of course, will be happy to answer any questions. I do just want to highlight for you the relief that is being requested. As you know, because this is a comprehensive permit under chapter forty B. Where regulated by, or, you know, the board's actions and our application are governed by a set of regulations. And in our cover memo, which I see that you have, we laid out that really the thing that we need to focus on tonight. Is whether or not the changes we're proposing are substantial or insubstantial. The regulations themselves lay out some, a framework, some guidance on what is and is not substantial. I don't think we need to go through all of those factors right now, today. But for instance, something that might be substantial would be an increase in the number of units by more than ten percent. A significant increase in height or footprint. And none of the changes that we're bringing forth and notifying you of today really fall within those categories. So this is just a request to get your agreement, hopefully that it's insubstantial. Again, we're happy to answer any questions and Matt will walk through in a bit more detail. If it is found to be substantial, then we'll have to take the next step under the regs, which would be a public hearing. But I think you'll see from the scope of the changes that we're proposing to you today. They really are minor in nature and we're notifying the board just for compliance with the forty B program. And the applicable regulations. So I'll pass it off to Matt. He can kind of walk through the plans and. I'm either happy to share our screen or Jennifer, it may be helpful to have Plan L one zero up. Which I think is towards the end of the PDF that we provided. It's actually. Let's see. Page fifty-eight of sixty-five. Oh, you've got it. You've got it before I could even get there. Fabulous. So. Yep, PDF page fifty-eight.
Great, so. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for meeting with us this evening. We're, we're happy to be here. Jason and I are. Really excited about what we've got going on at McElwain. Just to give you a little bit of an update, we are kind of at the closing phase of the construction now. We're. Looking to have a certificate of occupancy in January. And we're deep in the leasing process right now, so we have a call out for applications. We have a website, the McElwain School A P T S dot com. And we're really excited about everything that we've got going on on site and we're looking forward to welcoming the community. To the elements of the project that are, you know, public facing and also, you know, private facing. We think it's a significant improvement. You know, on what had previously been at the site. So. I'm going to get, I'm going to walk you through now what was in Carlos' memo, starting with the playground.
This is a, I think we want, it's a different plan, right?
Yeah, sorry, maybe we could just go down further in the PDF, because this is the original plan from the comprehensive permit.
Right.
But if we continue even further in the PDF, down to page fifty-eight. We should hit our new landscaping plan.
Sorry, your pages are going to look different than mine because this is my packet, so just let me know when to stop.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, keep going. What you're looking at now is just the recorded original permit.
Yep.
We're hitting the new ones.
Yep. No, that's the demo plan. Nope, next one. Great.
This is the one you want up, guys?
That's right. Yes, thank you, Jennifer. So to start with the playground, so there's some grading changes that occurred on site, so we wanted to. Address those, make sure that it was accessible per accessibility requirements, but also access. And so. We needed to kind of adjust the fencing there and we added these boulders for retention. Along the perimeter of the, the site, Plan North. And so we utilized those and then we shifted some of the play equipment around within the footprint of the playground, but the. Playground itself hasn't changed in terms of scope or. You know, what's, what's in it. It's still two different play areas for smaller and larger children. And then we did a couple of measures to make sure that the existing trees that we're saving were going to be properly accounted for. With the new parking area that you see there. So. Outside of the, the playground. So that's the first one.
Mind if I just, yeah, just, why don't we just orient you a little bit? We're so used to seeing this plan that. This is obviously maybe the first time you're taking a look at it, so. Carl, you have control over the mouse, right? So.
I actually, I think.
No, Nicole does, so just.
Okay, so Nicole, if you start up at right, right where you are is Main Street. So go back to where you were. So if you go a little bit higher up. Great, so now that's the, that's the edge of our site that is moving away from the town center. And Nicole, if you go kind of straight down, follow that line. That is Main Street. That would take you right into town center. So if you're driving the way that the cat, that the cursor was just going, McElwain, the McElwain School would be on your right. And the original drive for the school would be that driveway that you see at the top. And just, just so everybody recalls, one of our commitments to the board and to the community. Was that we would add a playground that would be nature oriented and nature themed. And that would be available to the public. So Matt was just talking about some of the specifics about a few of the changes. But the, the original intent of the playground doesn't change at all. It's just some of the, the grading that, that ended up having to change due to construction. But all of the features that we talked about originally were, are still a part of it. There's the wooden bridges and things like that. Yeah, so the size of it is materially the same. The trees that are going to be in it are materially, are all the same. Just some grading things that changes and we dug up these old boulders, right?
Yeah, they were, they were found while we were excavating for the new building foundation. And so in an effort to reuse them on site. We, we put them along the edge of the, the northernmost part of the playground area. And put the fence, we will put the fence in front of them. And so that's actually the next item. It's a good segue. The, the height of the fence around the perimeter of the site, we've actually reduced to six feet and we did that because. In, in an effort to be a good neighbor, we thought that that was something that might bode a little bit better. Around the perimeter of the site. It goes from stockade to chain link and then back around to the two twenty, at the two twenty-six Main Street butter. We've left it at eight feet because that was a request of theirs when we went through the initial comprehensive permit process. So that's the second element. The third is we are planning for a piece of public art and so. We, in lieu of what had been a circular or oval shaped grassy area in front of the McElwain School. We've shifted it a little bit to be a kind of a circular area. And if someone could kind of hover over the, the front of the, the school, yeah, that right there. Thank you very much. That's the kind of public art location now. So we, that was a change there.
And that, that, that will be the, we are committed to providing a memorial to the school and that was sort of left. That was a little ambiguous as to what, what we all, I think collectively thought we would do there. And one of the things that we've been thinking about is somehow inscribing. The teachers, you know, if a teacher had been there for a certain number of years, inscribing their name into the sculpture.
Yeah, faculty and staff, yeah.
It will continue to be a work in progress. Records are not so easy to obtain, we've realized.
We're, we're working on it.
Yeah.
And we're also getting a lot of input from community members, which is helpful. And then the last item on this list is the monument sign, which we had not formally presented. Um, and then the last item on this list is the monument sign, which we had not formally presented to you. We had placeholders for two signs originally, one at each of the driveways. Um, and we've changed that to just one monument sign. We've included that in the package, so you can see what we're proposing. With the dimensions and the heights, et cetera, and that would be, if you go Plan North again, just, just by the, right there, exactly where the cursor is. That's where the monument sign will go, and it will be lit from the ground on either side. And I think that summarizes the changes. No reduction to parking, the ninety three spaces that we originally proposed are still all on site. And we have electric vehicle charging stations that we now have placed right by the front entrances of the two buildings. Those are represented on this plan. Three on the new building side with the L-shaped building, which we call two fifty B. Um, and then two on the rear, what is now the rear, but the front of the McElwain School entry. We call that two fifty A. There's two charging stations there. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what we have for you this evening. And we're happy to discuss it and answer any questions that you might have for us.
I just, just would like to add, of the fifty seven apartments, fifty one are affordable. There's also seventy percent of the affordable apartments have a preference or local preference for. Folks that live in Bridgewater or work in Bridgewater. So it's been a great public-private partnership. Hopefully you've had a chance to drive by and peek around and. You can see what's going on, or we've historically restored. The McElwain School. All the, all the new windows are in to look historic. Be, and then also, I, what we both really enjoy is seeing what the restoration of two forty two Main Street. Which is the Greek Revival House, late eighteen hundreds house, and the barn, which was in terrible condition that was basically falling over that we've completely restored. So it's been a.
It's a beautiful building. We, we welcome you to come by.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you, Jason and Matt, and I'll just close our remarks. But again, I'm reminding the board, the purview tonight is really just our notification to you of these minor changes and. A hopeful agreement and request that you, you find based on the factors as we laid out in our cover memo, excuse me. These are insubstantial changes, and under state law, these are insubstantial changes. They will be incorporated and be part of the comprehensive permit. Which was previously approved. So again, thank you, and as, as Jason and Matt said, we're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I, I didn't hear the reasoning for going from two signs to one.
Yeah, that's a great question. We really want to direct people through that entrance on the north side. The, the, when you, when you enter in that direction, it takes you basically directly to the main entrances of the two main buildings. One of which also contains the leasing center. So if you see, if you enter from the, the south, is Nicole, I'm sorry if I got your name wrong. If, if you take your cursor down there, so you'd have to drive in. Yep, keep going. Drive in, drive in, drive in, then you have to go up, turn upwards versus the main driveway. Which takes you right into, the main entrances, by the way, for those two buildings are right there, right, just, just below.
Where the pavement, pavement is demarcated.
Those are the main entrances of the buildings.
That's fine. And then could you go back, because I didn't, I, I wasn't sure I caught, did you say you were changing the fencing from stockade to chain? And lowering it? Could you just expand on that? What was the height planned originally? And is, is that the change you're requesting to go from stockade to change?
Uh, we're not changing any materials, so sorry if I confused you.
I'm easily confused.
No, no, I apologize, it's my, my error, and we're not, so what we had proposed was always. Bearing fence material around the site. And in terms of the height, we had said originally all eight feet around. Which I think is a, is not in keeping with your, your bylaw. For fence height, so it's actually now permissible to go to six, so.
An eight-foot fence is a.
Very tall fence.
We, we mocked up an eight-foot fence on another project, and I was shocked. It, it felt like a wall.
Yeah, it's pretty high.
Yeah, it's really, it was too high, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Those were my only questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for clarifying.
I guess to expand on that just a little bit. I understand you're keeping it in, and, and is it up near the front where the playground is? That's where it's remaining? The eight foot, or is it down to the other side?
The other side, the butter, yeah. Two, two six, meaning.
Right along there.
Correct.
Okay. All, all along that whole length down there is still eight?
Correct.
Does it go all the way down?
Uh, I believe it, it goes to just before the. What's the two large trees in the white area?
Extends along the entire property line of two twenty six, is two twenty six, yeah. Yeah, you might recall, we, that a butter, I believe, spoke at the original hearing, and. We came to an agreement with her that we would, we would do an eight-foot fence there.
Yep.
And have you talked to any of the other abutters about the change in the fence? Because. No offense, guys, forty B, you know, we go through these and you, and you get a lot of people that come in and. You know, they may have wanted the eight foot, and that's what was on the plan. It may look like a wall to you, but it. They may have wanted it. So I guess the question just that I have in my mind is. Have, have you talked or gotten, gotten any kind of input from any of the other abutters?
So we have an open dialogue with the housing authority, as we're, they're a partner in the project and from a leasing standpoint, so we, we share applications with their waitlist. And Colleen Doherty, who is now the executive director, is a friend of, of mine from past projects, and so. We did talk to her at one point about some other items related to this, but not specifically the fencing. I do not think there would be an issue there. The other neighbor up there is the Bamsey.
Yeah, in particular, I was thinking more towards the, the playground area.
Yeah.
There is a house right there.
Yeah, that's the Bamsey folks who've been supportive of the project in the past and offered letters of support. You know, they, I don't think this, if anything, we're, we're actually allowing them to continue parking on a piece of land that is our property. Uh, which will be giving them an easement for. So I think, you know, with the boulders there and then the fence, kind of. In front of that, it will appear to be, you know, much taller. If you could zoom in on that area, that would, might be helpful for the chairman. So if you, yeah.
Up in the right-hand corner?
Yeah, the upper right-hand corner. Yeah, just make that the whole screen if possible. I think it's called out here. Yeah, you can see the boulders, and then the fence is proud of the boulders inside the play area. And that little sliver that we haven't utilized is, is our property, but we're, you know, leaving it paved area for the, your butter to utilize as their driveway.
And the, the fence line in the, the upper portion of that.
Yeah, six feet.
Six feet, and that is, is, is it, the wood stockade, is it vinyl, or what, I don't remember what it was called.
I believe that's stockade, six-foot wood, yep, the whole playground area.
Yeah, you can see it there. It's, it's six-foot wood stockade.
Okay. Again, I, I don't have a huge issue other than, you know, if you could potentially get a, a letter at least from. That a butter, that it's fine, because I don't think there's any other true houses that abut the property. Are they in the back? It's all, doesn't it butt up to the towns stuff?
And that, I, I would just like to, that, that's not an individual homeowner, though. That's, that property is owned by Bamsey, right?
Yeah.
Right, which has been a huge supporter of the project. We're certainly happy to go and ask them for, for a letter, but I don't think I.
Yeah.
I think if anything, they'd probably like to see this be six feet, not eight feet against their property, so that we're more open to them, you know?
Brian, the only individual homeowner is one on the south side.
On the south side, okay.
Institutional above and institutional to the back.
Okay. What is the sculpture? I'm just sorry. Has it been established yet what it's going to be?
Even, we're, we're working with an artist currently.
A local artist?
We're, we're not. We, we.
Anna wanted to bring that out, because I do some local art, and she was.
But we're, we're not, but it, we, we think, you know, art is subjective, right? So.
It sure is.
It's gonna be, it's going to be a little different. Uh, it's, it's.
It's gonna capture the spirit of, of the, what you think of when you think of, you know, in elementary school and, and all of those playful elements.
Yeah.
It's very tasteful. It'll be beautiful. It, again, subjective.
Yes.
But, you know, we, we. We're excited about it, and we really do feel like it's gonna offer that tribute that we've always talked about to. The, the history of the school.
It's not gonna be boring. It's gonna be fun. It's gonna be something different and interesting and unique, and as Matt said, it's not offensive in any sort of way, you know, but. You know, a lot of schools have been done in the state, and we think this will make it interesting, so.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members? Anna, Jerry? All right. Personally, I don't have a, an issue with, with the request to changes, so if someone would like to make a motion, wait. Jen?
Yes.
Is there anybody? Do we have?
It's not, it's not, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public meeting, right? Okay, good. Okay. Anybody wants to make a motion as to?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we find the changes to be insubstantial.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice seeing you.
Good luck, everyone.
Nice evening.
Good night.
Thanks, guys.
Bye, bye, Jennifer.
Um, I, that is the last item on the agenda, as we don't have any minutes from any other meetings, since we didn't have any.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Say no to adjournment. He's missed us so much.
We'll adjourn rules everything.
All right.
All right.
Okay.
Well, it's great to see you all.
All right, thanks. See you guys for a couple weeks.
And Jennifer, I can't believe your hair's so short.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm growing the gray out, so I had to cut it short, so it wouldn't look so.
It's good too, though, the short, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I didn't want to say that in the public meeting, but it caught me real far.
Mine was short too. I got a haircut.
I didn't notice your hair, but I was trying to pull your artwork, so.
All I can say about hair is anytime I tell my grandchildren I'm going for a haircut, they ask me why. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Everyone, bye-bye.